All right, we're live. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Kyle, our new intern for the summer, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. And before we get started, I just want to say how wonderful it is to see everyone's face without a mask. So for those of you that may not have seen it, you can come into Town Hall, obviously, still. If you're vaccinated, you don't need a mask. We're welcoming citizens back in for citizens' input and visitors for other agenda items. So with that, I think we have one citizen here for citizens' input.
My name is Bob Foster. I'm at 9 Bentwood Street. I'd like to bring this to the attention of the selectmen, even though my neighbors realize this is a planning board issue and will be decided by the planning board. We feel that it's unique in that it, in some ways, sets the stage for, I think, development of what I'll call interstitial spaces, especially in what are now like historical areas of the town. So with that, I'll read the letter. "We, the undersigned, are writing to you to voice our collective concerns as neighbors and abutters to the Orchard Place Development Project. At the time, COVID meeting restrictions severely limited our ability to participate in the normal process, but that's been taken care of. And the official planning board meeting will be the 24th of June. The proposed development project involves construction of a multifamily building in the center of a block of 100-plus-year-old historic homes, which are predominantly single-family. As neighbors and abutters, we have the following objections to the project: The proposed site has no roadway frontage and is surrounded by the backyards of seven to eight homes on all sides, with additional homes experiencing a negative visual impact. Access to this, what we see as an island development, is via private way, which is currently serving as a driveway and parking area for a homeowner. The lot is small for this type of development, with the resulting building and pavement covering most of the property. It requires the planning board to approve multiple variances to allow it to go forward. Due to the undersized lot and pavement requirements, all vegetation, including at least two mature, healthy trees, one enormous copper beech, are going to be removed, resulting in what we see as a barren lot. The impacts to us as abutters include a lack of privacy, safety concerns for the increased traffic in the middle of our backyards, and many small children who currently play within feet of the access road, and reduced property values from what will be an obviously out-of-place development in all of our backyards. We believe the town will also be negatively impacted by this project, more suited for Cambridge or Boston, right in the middle of one of the few remaining historical blocks in Foxborough. All of us take great pride in our historical neighborhood and maintain our homes and properties in that light. If allowed to go forward by the town of Foxborough, we would take this development as a direct affront to our efforts to maintain the historic importance and character of the neighborhood." And it's undersigned by 16 households, approximately 30 people.
Great, thank you. And just for anyone that's following the issue, as well as the rest of the board, that is on the June 24th Planning Board Agenda. So there'll be more to come. More to come on that. It's a Thursday night.
Thanks so much for hearing me.
Well, thanks for presenting it to the communities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else send in anything for citizens' input remotely? Yeah, so while she's looking at that, so for now, since some people may be comfortable coming in in person for citizens' input and some people may not feel comfortable, we will allow either citizens' input to come in at the email address printed on the agenda or people are welcome to come in for citizens' input in person for the near future, unless things change. Okay, great. So the next item is the COVID-19 update. And we talked about, we'll probably, we may pull back on this to like a monthly update. I think last time I checked, we were at one, I don't want to steal Bill's thunder, but we were at one case in the community. So while it's still obviously top of mind, I think we may be able to pull back on these updates a little bit, so.
That's right. So that was just basically my report, is that we are down to one case. There was no additional deaths. And since the beginning of the COVID-19 impact, we had a total of two people that lost their lives as a result of that. So we're fortunate, but unfortunate for those folks that didn't survive it. But we are glad to see we're on the other side of this situation in that we're most assuredly moving in the right direction and putting people back into where they should be and hopefully in a very safe and continued safe environment here in the community.
All right, great. Any questions on the COVID-19 update? All right. The next item is a public event application for a Foxborough CrossFit Road Race.
Christine, and she's attending.
Okay, great. We have the presenter here virtually. Do you mind just introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about the event? I think you're just on mute still.
There you go.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Chris Champa, and I am at CrossFit Tork in Foxborough. We had put in an application to run a 5K road race on August 15th. We are going to do it at Schneider Electric on Ponsett Street. That location has been approved by their facilities manager, Ed Palome. I have all documentation. The application has been put forth to the town. The latter part of April, we passed in a hard copy. I've been in communication with Ms. Lang and also Mr. Robinson with the Board of Health. And I'm here for any, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to present anything additional outside of the application, or if there's any questions that I should be ready to answer.
I think the only thing I would just call out, thank you for your application. It was very complete. And you know, you guys are our first road race since the restrictions have been lifted. And thank you for the COVID safety plan. It's something that you guys didn't have to do, but you really worked to get that turned in. So really appreciate that. It's the typical, I'd call it the typical route we see in town. It looks like everything's in order here, so. Any questions from the board?
No, just, go ahead, Don. I was just gonna say, it's kind of good that they did it anyhow. I mean, hopefully, we don't see anything going the other way. But if it did, it would probably be something that we could still go forward with, with some type of COVID restriction. So it's kind of good that they're there, just in case. I don't think we'll need it, but.
Yeah, agree. It's nice that it's done.
Yeah.
Yeah, you already answered my question. It's the typical.
The typical route, yeah.
5K route, okay.
Okay. And is there anything else that I need to do? We were hoping to get approval, and upon approval, we were going to begin to market. The interesting thing about this road race is that we are going to donate some of the proceeds to the Foxborough Public Schools Nutrition and Fitness Program. We've been in contact with the superintendent. It's just going to be that we will just send a check after the event to them. And but prior to that, obviously, we want to start marketing the event. So will I get something written in approval? Or should I expect something by a specific date so that we can move forward with our marketing?
We'll take our vote right here tonight, so you'll be all set. You know, you may just want to familiarize yourself. If you guys haven't done a race before, just, you know, the rules in town about putting up signs on, you know, public property and stuff, just follow the rules. And I'm sure Barry Ringler, right, he's the one that's in charge of the signs and everything, can answer any questions if you have any questions about that.
Okay. So I will receive information about the details of expectation?
Yep, Chris, it's Katie Lang. Hey. Sorry, I'm on Zoom, sorry. Yeah, I'll be in touch tomorrow, and I'll just connect you with Deputy Chief Noonan, who can kind of just make sure we're all set in terms of like roadblocks. And I'll have, after the board takes their vote, I'll have something in writing for you tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate this.
Thank you for organizing the event. Any other questions? Otherwise, I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve the public event application for the CrossFit Road Race on August 15th, 2021.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, you're approved. Good luck.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Katie, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, I didn't want to muddy up the efforts here, but just to let you know that the Board of Health has officially notified us that plans are no longer required. So I know that you require one for this one. This is perfectly fine. It's glad we did it. But just so you know, going forward, there is no requirement from the Board of Health anymore for COVID plans.
Yeah, I think they'd already started it, just the background. So we figured might as well make use of it.
That's why I didn't want to say it before you thought they'd vote, because it was already going to go anyway, so.
And that letter is, the Board of Health is in Board Docs under this particular race, so that you know.
That was the first one.
Yep, perfect. Thanks for being the guinea pig on the application after COVID.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule on the Common Traffic Trial pattern. We have Lance, we have Paige, and we have Chris.
There you have Chris.
All right, I think we're ready to start. And then we'll turn it over to you guys to give us an update.
All right, Chris, do you want to bring up the slides?
Yep, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. We do have a few slides to walk through. So I'll share my screen and walk through them as Lance talks about them. And let me.
All right. There we go. That was good.
All right.
All right. So we just wanted to, you know, as promised, we wanted to give you guys an update on the traffic modifications on the Common Rotary. So just a brief update, sort of in the details and the timeline, just to refresh everyone. April 4th, we received grant funding through the Massachusetts Shared Street Program. This was something largely that was, you know, we were kind of helped through with Kittleson and Associates. They, you know, we made connections with them. We're really just looking for, you know, grant funding for crosswalk landing at the time. But this kind of, this specific grant wasn't really geared towards that. It was more, you know, it's supposed to be more holistic and larger focused. But Kittleson thought that the Common Rotary would be a good fit for it. The state agreed and thought it was worth further evaluation. So we were awarded the grant funding to do so. On May 17th, the trial started. We've since made various modifications and adjustments as issues sort of came to light. Just basically removed some sections of curbing, you know, adjusted the location of some of the cones just to accommodate some of the large vehicles that were going through there. We posted an online survey on May 25th to June 1st. And then the Kittleson Associates actually did a pedestrian intercept survey on May 27th at the local farmer's market to collect some feedback from people who are more, you know, actually walking around the Common and, you know, participating. And then on June 3rd, we had a subcommittee review meeting, just to, you know, dig deeper on some of these issues before the Board of Selectmen meeting tonight. So next slide, just to review some of the results. You should have received a larger packet with a much more detailed review of the online survey results. But it was posted on social media, Towns Page, a local discussion group, and on the Town webpage. We got about 405 total responses, 338 of which identified as local residents. 95.5% of respondents said their primary, you know, interaction with the Common was just driving alone. 72.5% of those drivers don't really typically walk or bike. And then the respondent's use of street parking was, you know, primarily never or every few months, so not very often. Of those respondents, only 14% liked the new parallel parking. So not very many, obviously. And, you know, a larger, but still a majority was, 42.4% of the respondents preferred the lane changes on South Street. So if we compare this to the pedestrian intercept survey on May 27th, obviously a much smaller sample. It wasn't, you know, as many, it's hard to get a large reach and those kind of things. We had 27 total responses there, 18 were local residents. You know, but it was much more, you can see kind of the breakdown. It was much 63% of the, you know, only drive. So it's a little bit better in terms of walk usage. And, you know, more people did use the parking. But here we have 43% of the people surveyed liked the parallel parking and 50% liked the lane changes on South Street. So that brings us to some of our recommendations. So the recommendations we're looking to make based on sort of the some of the discussions with the subcommittee, and I wasn't there at the time, unfortunately. So Chris, you can kind of, and Paige, you guys can fill me in, because you guys actually were able to sit through it. Unfortunately, it was at my brother's wedding, so I couldn't go. But so what we're looking to do potentially is at least probably keep the island, because we believe it's working at the South Street and Central Street area in terms of preventing cross-traffic from making that dangerous merge area. But we're looking to do, so we want to do kind of a stepped approach, where at first, we'd probably only either paint it in or maybe do a red brick imprint situation, possibly add some narrow delineers down the center line. So it wouldn't really be as much as a large impact as you're seeing now with all these cones and curb bump outs. We could potentially later on then upgrade that to like a traversable curb kind of situation to give it some kind of dimension if need be. So Chris, do you want to expand on that at all?
Yeah, so, you know, the thought, the thought is that obviously with all the cones and barrels and the, you know, five-inch-tall rubber curbing, you know, vehicles can't drive over it. You know, it's something that, as we've had to move some of that curbing out of the way, we've seen that, you know, something level of the ground would be helpful for the larger vehicles. But we want to make it clear that this is not something you should be driving over. You know, a stamped concrete or a stamped asphalt is going to have some texture to it. It's going to have, you know, a little bit of that kind of rumble strip feel to it, where you do it once and you go, ah, I shouldn't be driving over that without, you know, impacting our plow operations or any of the larger operations that we have. You know, smaller impact to game day traffic, maneuvering around the Common, those types of things. So that was kind of what the subcommittee discussed. And, you know, for me, and the subcommittee, the red brick imprint is a nice feature, a nice aesthetics to the Common versus something that's just granite curbing and concrete. So that was kind of the thought process on that. And again, if down the line, you know, we get, do this work with striping and the imprint, and it doesn't do what we think it's going to do, then we have some options, you know, down the road to add in, you know, a T-100 curbing, which is similar to the curbing down on the roundabout on Foxborough Boulevard for the truck pad. You know, it lets the larger vehicles traverse over that as needed. But again, the smaller vehicles are going to stay off of it. So that's the thought on the South Street and Central Street Island. Sound about right, Paige? All right, so we'll keep going. We've got one or two more slides, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
So in regards to the parallel parking, so we're looking at two different options here potentially. And this is something we'd like the board to consider tonight. One option that was discussed was continuing the parallel parking trial, but also adjusting the width of the parallel parking spaces by adding an additional foot to each one. Currently, they're eight foot wide, and we would potentially adjust them to nine feet wide, but keep the existing travel lanes what they are, except that the, you know, change them at the top of school street on the curve to 11.5. So that would still maintain the benefit of having that road diet effect that does slow people down associated with parallel parking, which is, you know, a huge benefit to the pedestrians in that area. But, you know, give the parallel parkers a little bit more, you know, space to be comfortable potentially. The other option we're considering, or we'd like the board to consider, is reverting back to angled parking, but with a three-foot offset from the existing curb location. This, the three feet plus the existing two-feet gap from the fence line could potentially allow us to create like a five-foot pedestrian walkway. And, you know, we asked Kittleson to perform a turning analysis, which, you know, showed that vehicles would still be able to stay within the protected buffer area. So it looks like that's feasible. You know, we'd probably, again, want to do that on a trial basis. You know, because either way, in either of these canals, we're going to be blacking out restriping. So both are, you know, I don't think any more of an inconvenience to us on that perspective. And in both cases, we'd probably want, we're looking at probably extending the parking, that parking trial to July 20th meeting of the Board of Selectmen and considering it at that time. Chris, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think Lance covered most of it. It's really, you know, there are two options. In the subcommittee meeting, we had discussed continuing the parallel parking to see how the events at the Common would actually work. You know, we saw, we did get, you know, two farmer's markets, and then one of the farmer's market last Thursday was actually in conjunction with an event at the theater. And those parallel parking spaces were full. I drove through there at 5:30, and I think I only saw one empty spot. And what that does, like Lance said, it gives it that road diet, traffic calming, you know, feel, where you feel like you need to go slower around there, which is part of the project that we've put forward, you know, in this process. Although we have listened and as the selectmen that we're in on this subcommittee have seen the comments, that the residents just don't like it. So, you know, knowing that and seeing that, we did reach out to Kittleson. They did do this turn analysis. That's the picture down at the bottom, right? You can push that curb out three feet and be able to put a five-foot sidewalk in there. And it keeps people in what was that back-out area. You know, puts your right about on the line, so you're not going to impact traffic until you go to pull into and merge with the traffic. So there's some benefit there. Obviously, I think we know that the people in town who, you know, spoke through survey, and they like that pull-in parking. It's an easier maneuver to pull it. But it does then leave 30 feet of pavement out there. So it's nice and wide. So people are going to feel like they can, you know, pick up their speed a little bit again. So those are kind of the two, the trade-offs, the options that we have in front of the board tonight. And I think that's kind of what we're looking for discussion on and options on from the board.
And if I could just chime in as the planner here, you know, always looking ahead, one of the reasons that we're doing this is, and I've said this before, and I just want to reiterate, especially for the residents, you know, we have heard them and we do see what's said and we understand. But two things. One, folks freaked out about the changes up at the top of the Common and, you know, those shocking barrels and cones. And I think most of us would agree that that has been a tremendous benefit for traffic. And it has also not hurt the appearance of the Common. And the other thing is, is that we just haven't seen things activated up there. So if anything, I think extending it a bit would give us a chance to get, you know, some concerts on the Common and the farmer's market and the orpheum going and really have a bustling up there to see how it works. Because when I was up there at the farmer's market, I actually felt like it really worked. And I know people don't like the parallel, and I get it. And I'm not even that strong of a proponent. But what worries me is what Chris mentioned just now, is that 30 feet of pavement. And you can hear people zoom as they go around that corner at the top of the Common. You can hear them accelerate and start to go. So there really is a trade-off. And, you know, do we want this to be a thoroughfare and a quick cut-through? Or do we want this to be a pedestrian-safe area that soon is going to have a brewery, and, you know, a more vibrant theater as we get back to life, you know, active restaurants? So we're trying to balance, again, the pedestrians that we haven't seen for 18 months with the traffic. So, end of my soapbox. But I want to remind everybody of why we're looking ahead, and it's hard to picture it right now.
Well, I think that's why, too, it was important to get, you know, the intercept that Kittleson and Dan and Margaret did, you know, of actually talking to the people who are up, walking and using the Common and parking on the Common versus, you know, an online survey where, you know, people can voice their opinion without actually getting feedback, you know, face-to-face. So Margaret, you know, did a great job. I was up there for a while with her, of doing that intercept and having those conversations kind of one-on-one with people to help them understand what we're doing up there. So I think those are, oh, we got one more slide, I think.
Yeah. So, yeah, this slide is just talking about, you know, future sort of expansion of these, you know, explorations we've been doing over the Common. Phase three would, as I believe has always been, the consideration of mechanic and coca-cassid intersection here and potentially applying a similar island setup to what was done at South and Central. We're not looking at changing the parking over in this area. So maybe that'll make some people happy. But, you know, just potentially doing something like the red stamp brick here as well, potentially, you know, where we could explore just, you know, with the curb, the curbing or the, you know, the cones at first and just, you know, see what kind of impact it has.
I will stop sharing my screen.
All right. Well, thank you for that analysis. And, you know, for anyone who may be watching at home, oh, we're getting some feedback, Mike. You know, the board got, I think it was a 42-page document with all the survey results, all the emails. So if you sent an email to Lance or to the selectmen, just know that we got them. We read them some. There was one citizen that even had like some cool ideas from, I think it was the UK or Europe or somewhere that they sent over. So that type of, you know, constructive feedback, I think, was really helpful. And just know that it was received and read. So I think we're here, you know, now, if I'm summarizing this correctly, to make a decision on the South Street side, which I've said before, I am not a fan of change, but I do think this one is working. I live off of South Street and I come up that way. And very often, people would just blow from the inside lane down Central. And I definitely feel like it's a lot safer. I think someone, I read somewhere in one of the comments, someone said, you know, what we're doing is just forcing people to follow the rules of what the road should be. You know, we're not a Cape Cod Rotary like people reference that have two lanes coming in and out. Like, it's just not how we're designed to be set up and compared to. So, you know, this design here really makes people follow those rules. And I like what's going on at the South Street end. The parking, I think we've kind of heard loud and clear. And, you know, even myself, I think Paige and I stood out there twice and watched cars flip by. And even, you know, sometimes I'm looking over my shoulder to get in the other lane. And then I'm like, oops, I'm in that parallel parking spot if there was a car there. But you're right, it does slow traffic down. So that's the other, the other decision in front of us tonight. Do we widen the parallel spots and try that out? Or do we go back to the old back-out parking, but there's just less room to back out? Which I think that was so wide, because it was meant for pedestrians and backing out. So those are the kind of two decisions. And then, you know, Chris, do we have to move forward on the island? Or do we just want to move forward on everything at once? Once we decide the parking?
That's up to the board.
Okay. What's your, and what's your recommendation as an engineer?
I would probably take them separately. If the one's easier, if the South Street, Central Street end is an easy win for the night, then that would be great to have that and get that out of the way and then have a bigger conversation about parallel parking and what the parking should look like.
Okay. Yeah, and it kind of amazes me how many comments I've seen about how we're ruining the Common with barrels and cones. You know, it's never meant to be a common full of barrels and cones.
It's a very temporary situation.
It's a temporary means to try this out. So, you know, for me personally, I think that that has worked. I'd actually be a little bit worried about the five-inch curbing coming out and people driving over it again. So it'll be interesting to see what happens there.
Well, there is, because I love what they're doing at the bottom for South Street. And I've been cut off many times because I am making that corner then to go down coca-cassid. So that's my trial if I'm coming from Stop &amp; Shop anywhere. And so I've been cut off many times. So I, Chris knew from, I said, I love whatever we're going to do there that's going to stop that. I think his suggestion on something that's just a, like red brick or something that's textured to give that feel, I'm not sure if that is going to be, because I think people will just do the same thing and drive over it. But one of the things that we had asked is, you know, start with that, because that's less intrusive. You know, we most certainly want to make sure that when it's time to plow, that it's not hindersome to them trying to get the Common plowed or push snow places. So I had asked if there was anything. I know in Summerfield with the crosswalks, we put something up that's just portable until it's time for the snow to come. And then it comes off, so.
The five inches that's there now.
Yeah, they said, whether it was anything that high or not, there is some portable things that we might be able to look into. If, but why not try the less intrusive first? And if that doesn't seem like it's doing what the cones and stuff are doing now, we could maybe go to something else that would be able to then come off, you know, when it's snow time. And, you know, and I said the same thing, except I was willing to, I think it might have been Seth came to the meeting and said, or someone said, how about if we give it another week or two in the trial? And I was willing to do that, because let's just, you know, really give people more time. I couldn't bite myself on the parallel parking. I'm a good parallel parker. It doesn't scare me to parallel park. I just felt that narrowness. I told them that I was trying so bad to drive around different times of day. You know, I might go a different way home, but decide to go around the Common. This morning, I watched a school bus come off of Main. And I know. This morning, I watched a school bus come off of Main, and, and I know the measurements are there, so they should be able to do it, but not only did they cut where their first spot was, and I know if there was a car there, they wouldn't have, but the, the bus would have struggled a little bit, would have really had to slow down, I think. And so, I myself, right now, couldn't bite on the parallel parking, but I was definitely willing to give it a more trial period, if just, if that's what Chris thought, and then Chris sent me a text this afternoon that they had this other option they wanted to present in, about the, you know, and I was still, you know, we, we heard complaints about people getting the pull-in parking, having to walk behind their car then to access the common.
Now they won't.
Now they won't. I thought, myself, getting out of the car, if I had young children still to get out, opening those doors into the, the lane of traffic, I thought would be more dangerous than just having to walk, walk behind, but like, what they've come up now seems like a great idea, too. And so, that, that's really what my input was, just from, from doing, but with that all being said, you know, everything has been done with engineers and to be able to work, it just, I'm just not sure if, I wasn't quite as comfortable with, with that, so I love the new idea about keeping the pull-in parking, and my two cents were, the whole time, I've been waiting since Chris did the top of the common to, to find out what they were going to do at the bottom of the common to, to stop that. And there were a couple of other things, Officer Fitzgerald was there, he brought a couple of things forward. Number one, that they could, he could not find any pedestrian accidents on the common. I know Doc does a lot of walking and gave, last meeting gave us some feel that him feeling even a little more safe now. I, I think the only thing is, we can't, we can do all of this, you can't control people not doing what they're supposed to do. When you see somebody approaching that crosswalk, you're supposed to stop. The, the pedestrian always has the right of way. So, we can do all of this, and if people don't follow the correct rules to drive, it, it will never be safe.
Yeah, everyone's in such a rush now, you know, so.
I think we can do what we can, but anyhow, my two cents, that, that's my two cents, and that's what I shared at the subcommittee meeting, and I do like the second, second eye, second idea of giving that a try with the pull-in parking, myself.
Yeah, I, that's kind of my gut, too, but, and just to clarify, too, we received a grant, so I know I've seen some comments about, you know, the money spent on this and this was covered through a grant and will continue to be, right, Chris, with these adjustments, too? So, just to kind of put a lid on, on some of those comments and make sure people understand that, so.
Including flower pots.
Including, and flowers, and flowers, yeah. We've already had people asking about adopting those next year, so. Ed, Doc, thoughts on, you know, if you want to do both pieces, just, and then we can take a vote?
Yeah, I mean, I'm for putting that five-inch curbing right away down there, but, but I agree, let's, let's try the red brick, let's go for it, let's see what the cars do. I agree with Steph, cars are just going to drive over the brick.
Yeah, can we almost leave that for a little bit? Like, can we leave that middle part, Chris, just to like phase people out of it?
Well, to be honest with you, Doc, that's, that's where I was going the whole time, and then Chris started talking about the hindrance of, of plowing, and, and that's the only thing that made me say, okay, well, let's try the other way, knowing that we could.
We could go there.
Or even if we train people until the snow, you know?
Yeah.
So, you know, the, the red brick.
Do that, you know, in order to do that red brick, whether it's, you know, concrete or stamped asphalt or whatever it happens to be, you know, we're going to have to work and get a contractor lined up, you know, make sure that we have funding available for it. So, it's something that we will certainly do this construction season if that's the, you know, what the board decides to do, but that curbing will stay up there. We can move some of the barrels, we can reduce some of the cones, so that it's not as cumbersome and, and, you know, daunting, I guess. We can pull some of that stuff out of there, but that rubber curbing, you know, will stay in place at least until we get that work done. And then we can leave some of the cones up there, you know, after the fact, too, just to carry it out and continue to get people to, to learn that that's what they're supposed to do when they go around the common.
Right, and I'm all for that. As, as for the parking, personally, we already know the angle parking works. I'd like to see the parallel parking with the changes Lance brought up for a two- or four-week trial first. Maybe with that extra space might make people a little bit more comfortable. But again, I know I'm saying it way too often, but as, as a person that walks down there three, four times a day, it is slowing down traffic, just like it's slowed down on Commercial Street. Anybody that drives Commercial Street at nine at night, they're doing 35 right to the stop sign, because there's no cars there. But that's different during the day. With theirs cars parked on both sides, cars, cars slow down, they slow down once they get to Wall Street, and, and I see that happening to some extent now on that side of the rotary. And I can't overemphasize, slowing down and being courteous is an advantage to what we want in the downtown. You know, that 10-year-plan page reminds us of every once in a while of the revitalization of downtown, and that's to make it pedestrian and family-friendly, and that works. So, I kind of, I kind of understand the parallel parking thing, but at the same time, it is working because it's slowing down traffic. People are just wary, so they're driving slower, and that's okay.
And, and I had brought up to Chris, too, like, in, in front of South Street Pizza, it's the same thing, parallel, parallel, kind of on a curve, but that feels okay. And it's really like the width there that makes it kind of not, yeah, not feel okay there, and that's what's, you know, now in front of us, too.
Didn't Chris and Lance last time say that's a little bit wider, though?
It is, yeah. That feels right, it's the same thing.
Right.
But one feels right and one feels too narrow, so that's why we, you know, we have the second option, it's, it's only a foot, but it would feel a little wider.
I'd like to see it tried.
Yeah.
Before we go back to angle parking, because we know that, that works.
Yeah, yeah. Is that an easy enough shift for you guys, too? Or are they all pretty tough shifts?
No, I mean, it's just paint, black paint, and then more white and yellow, so we've got, you know, our highway crews ready to go, they're actually lining up to paint probably Thursday night, and then they'll probably have another night next week, so we can kind of sub out some of the work that they were, you know, planning to do, crosswalks, you know, other parts of town, you know, and we can shift them to this. I've already talked to the highway supervisor about that, so whether it's this week or next week, we should be able to get it restriped one way or the other.
My only concern with that is, though, then changing again, is, is like fatigue in all the different changes, you know, it's one way and then it's a little wider, then we're back to, back to angled, so that's my only hesitation on that piece is just becoming kind of an irritant or confusion for, you know.
That, I think that's why I want to do the wider one.
Yeah.
Because all it is is just changing things a little bit.
Yeah.
But the parallel parking's still there.
People may not even notice that.
Right.
That width change. Okay. Ed, thoughts? If, if you're done, Doc, sorry.
Certainly, one of the issues that I notice up in the center of the community is the lack of speed signs at different locations. For example, if you're coming up Central Street to go into the common, you don't hit the 20-mile-per-hour sign until you are reaching Wall Street. And I've noticed some other signs indicating the same thing about trying to slow vehicles on their approach even before getting closer to the common, and, you know, whether there's a consistency, and, Chris, for you to look at that to see if we could enhance the signage issue along with, you know, the changes that were discussed about installing some areas of brickwork that also, I think, would help moderate speeds kind of around the common, because people coming off of 140 on Main Street, coming into the common, there are a lot of times as I'm approaching that area, as I'm coming up from Mechanic Street to go around the common, they're still coming through at a hefty clip.
Men chair. So, along with Ed's suggestion, and Chris, this is to you and Lance, I noticed in some communities now that they're actually going to paint in the pavement itself to slow people down, so in other words, put a 20-mile-an-hour pavement marker right inside, right on the pavement itself, as opposed to putting the signs, which tend to slow people down when they see it, and even what, even putting additional arrows, you know, slow arrows that, that slow the pavement, the, the traffic down a little bit, I don't know, have you thought about that option at all?
Yep, actually, we were talking, Lance and I were talking about a little bit of that today. Lee and I had, when we talked Friday about it, that was something that she had mentioned, was the people coming in from Main Street, you know, and, and the feel that they're coming in, you know, faster than, than they should be. So, we had talked about doing exactly that, build, you know, painting 20 miles an hour on the ground as you're coming into the common. Also, looking at, working with the police department, they have a variety of capabilities now to pick up that data, and we typically, when they put out their, their data collection units, you know, they're seeing that, to the eye, it seems like somebody's going, you know, 10 miles, 15 miles, and they're going 50, you know, over the speed limit, but when they collect the data, it's, it's that feeling. So, I think that's something we can work with them, the chief, Ken Fitzgerald, and Officer Buckley, who, who does a lot of that speed collection data for them, to actually do a study up there and see what people are doing. That way, we get a baseline for, you know, the trial where we stand now, and then we can do some of these improvements and see if they're, if they have an impact, too, and do another study later on.
I think that's a great idea, Chris, and, you know, 20's been the speed limit forever, is that even the right speed limit? Should it be, I don't know, 15? I'm just throwing things out there, but then we can look at all that.
So, the, the issue with speed limits is they're, they're regulated, so it, it's not something where the, the white signs with black text are the ones that are regulatory signs, so that's what the police department can enforce. We can, you can choose to put up the yellow advisory signs, and we can put them up at five miles an hour, 10 miles an hour. They're not enforceable, but it does tell people, hey, there's something different about this, you know, stretch of road, you should be going slower. You know, so, we could do those types of signs if that was something that the board wanted to do. The regulatory signs, the lowest we could go is 25 miles an hour, so the fact that they're 20 now is, is pretty good. You know, we can't, can't actually go lower than 25, you end up having to do speed studies, and they're actually set at 80, the 85th percentile of how fast people are going. So, every time you bring up doing a speed study, and you end up with, you know, speed limits that are actually going to be higher than what's posted.
Okay, something, we'll leave that as is, and, um, don't talk to people about the yellow signs, I didn't know that.
Never mind.
That's a secret. But, um, yeah, I, I do think we try to do things on the pavement, though, I, you know, there was a very intentional effort to, there was a lot of sign clutter on the common, and obviously, speed limit signs are important, but it becomes clutter where people just don't notice it anymore, so as much as we can put it on the pavement or, you know, even install something on Main Street, because people are coming in, coming in hot off Main Street now that they know that they kind of have that clear path, so whatever we can do to slow traffic down there, too, I think will, will help. So, in front of us, we have, we have the two decisions, really. I think there's three motions, but two decisions. If we feel we're ready, so do we want, it sounds like we want to handle them separate. So, I think, it sounds like we're ready to move on the first motion, the motion to install a permanent divertor island on South Central Street. From an engineering perspective, everyone agrees it's working, we haven't had any crashes, I know, I asked Chris about that, there was no car accidents, I feel like the pedestrian exposure, to me, feels safer crossing there. Paige, I know you've done a lot of walking up there, too, so.
I think when all the cones and when all the orange is gone, too, I think people, their, their eyes are, they're trying to maneuver around it, and like, I wonder if they're catching the pedestrians, because they're so, you know, with, with everything, so I, I think once those go down and it just, the whole area looks more appealing, I think, I think it'll, it'll definitely work.
I agree, and, and there's not a, a crew that's rolling in tonight to, to throw this up, it's going to take some time if things ever really went bump, so it sounds like we're ready for a motion there, and then after that, let's move on to the parking down at the north end.
Okay, so we'll get the first one done? Okay, motion to install permanent divertor island on South Street slash Central Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so now let's move on to the discussion, you know, we really have two things in front of us, you know, I think whichever one we decide, we're going to extend till July 12th, but do we want to widen the spaces to make it feel a bit more like in front of South Street Pizza, and then if that doesn't work, we can always go back to the angled parking? I think Doc had a good suggestion, that it feels, I, I think it may not even be as noticeable to people, and then if it doesn't work, that's exactly what a trial is for, and that's what we're doing, and if we need to roll out another survey, you know, we can, but I do think we need to get ahead of the messaging, too, that, you know, this was approved, and here's the timing, and you're going to see the barrels go down, and here's why. So, as much as we can get ahead of the messaging, I think that we should just be proactive with that to avoid any undue, you know, confusion.
So, so I would make a suggestion that, you know, at least in board docs, sort of combining the second and third one.
Yes.
Into one motion.
And I just want clarification, if you guys don't mind, so where we're widening eight to nine feet, are those the parallel spaces on both sides, and are we making any adjustment to the driving lane, or is it just the parking spots?
Chris?
Yep, so, those would be, the parking on both sides would be widened from the eight to the nine feet, so that lets, the people that are actually parking, giving them an extra eight, an extra foot, you know, to feel safe coming out. And then we would restripe, we're going to have to restripe anyway, so we'll make sure that the spaces are, the travel lanes are 11 and 1/2 feet.
Okay.
So, right now, as you come in, into the two lanes, you know, they're narrow, they're, they're about 10 and 1/2 feet as you come in at that point from Main Street, so we'll widen those out to 11 and 1/2 and hold the 11 and 1/2 feet. So, really, you're gaining, you know, a two-foot, extra two feet on both lanes and parking spaces on both sides of that lane line.
So, if I'm understanding, right, it's four feet, one in each parking spot and one in each lane, is that, so four feet total?
Correct.
Okay.
Chris, where, where does that four feet come from?
So, we'll push the, the parking on the common side, those parallel parking spaces, will get pushed closer to the common.
The planters will move.
So, the planters will move towards the common.
And where it, where it kicks out, sidewalk kicks out?
There's no parking there, that's all striped off, is no parking. You have to have a buffer by the crosswalk, so you can't park right up next to the crosswalk.
Right along there, there's no parking on either side?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, does that mean the, the lanes of traffic are kind of narrow there?
Widen.
No, 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 but, I mean, but, but, what's, what's, there's a planter, I'm trying to think of vision.
So, everything will just, the planters will shift over and everything, the spot will widen a foot, each travel lane will widen by a foot each, and then.
But where there's no parking on either side now, what is there? Is, is there a planter after the, after the kickout?
Uh-huh.
Do, do, okay, and what about on the other side?
Same thing, there's a painted buffer on both sides, the common side and the storefront side, on both sides of the crosswalk.
So, is it going to change the traffic to move a little bit there, or no?
Do you know what I mean? The traffic will shift a little bit, but I don't think you'll know, because the lines will be repainted.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll still be, it'll still be a straight shot, once you come around the corner from Main Street and you get into the straight section, it'll still be a straight shot, the lanes will be straight, the parking on the common side will just be pushed further in towards the common.
Okay.
So, everything, everything will shift, but you're not going to see a shift in the lanes halfway down by the crosswalk.
And if you guys can just make sure that you also just coordinate with Bill's office to make sure we get on this kind of positive PR campaign, like, hey, you know, we heard you, we're widening this, we're seeing if it works, if it doesn't work, here's the plan, this is going to go to July 20th, just, you know, anything we can do to get out ahead of it and avoid the tsunami of questions, I think will be helpful. All right, so it sounds like we are ready for motion. Now, our motion only has eight to nine feet on the, on the parking spots, I think it also needs to say that the travel lanes go from 10 and 1/2 to 11 and 1/2. So, with the motion that you have there, can you just add, the travel lanes will go from 10 and 1/2 to 11 and 1/2, and then it would be the second and third motion?
Mm-hmm.
You ready for me to go? Is that correct, Chris? Yeah, I captured it right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay. Motion to widen parking spaces from eight feet to nine feet to provide additional buffer as well as travel lanes from 10 and 1/2 feet to 11 and 1/2 feet during an extended trial period.
Through July 20th.
Through, through July 20th?
Yeah, it was going to be a second motion, we can just wrap it into one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Perfect.
Okay, through, through July 20th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? Everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah, very comfortable, very much.
Okay, great. All right. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thanks, guys. Thanks for all your work on this. I know it's it's been a lot. We really appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I know that Paige may be leaving. Are you coming, are you sticking around tonight, Paige? Are you are you done for tonight?
All right, we'll move to something else after, then. Just hold on a little bit.
Yeah, we just want to, we just want to hold on for a second. Do you want to congratulate Paige for something that she's.
Yeah, so we're going to move down to an item listed in selectmen's update while Paige is with us. And I have worked so much and got to know Paige so well over the last year and a half, and I can't say enough fabulous things about her. She is a doer. Like, if you want to get stop, something done, just mention an idea to this woman, and she will, like, map it out. It's just, she gets stuff done. I love that about her. So it looks like the Rotary Club also recognized that. So I'm going to put you on the spot and read this letter from the Rotary Club of Foxborough. The Foxborough Rotary Club is delighted to let you know we have selected you as this year's Paul Harris Award Awardee. This international award is given by Rotary Clubs to persons who have in their personal and professional life demonstrated a significant commitment to service in their community. This is the Rotary's highest honor for the work that seeks to improve the lives of others in its select group. Recipients have included, among many others, President Carter, astronaut James Lovell, and Jonas Salk. On June 28, the Foxborough Rotary Club will be having an evening dinner, which will include the Paul Harris Awards presentation for the contributions that you have made to the town of Foxborough. So they have invited Paige to dinner and recognized her, and we just wanted to make sure that we took a moment during our meeting to congratulate you and recognize you for your wonderful contributions as well. So thank you, Paige.
Thank you, Leah. Thank you very much. I'm, I don't even know what to say, so.
First time I've seen her speechless since I've known her, by the way.
I'm going to say a little something, Paige, so you don't have to. How's that? For the five years I've been on this board, I've just been totally amazed with the work that you do, Paige. You've done a phenomenal job. We were very lucky when you came on board here at Foxborough, and the changes we see here downtown and the projects you have going are tremendous, and recognition well deserved.
Thanks, Doc. Thank you very much.
Agreed. You're a rock star, Paige.
Thank you, everyone. I love, I love working with all you. I mean, honestly, it really is, working in Foxborough, it's just, there's something special here. So thank you so much for everything, because you really do make it easy to enjoy, and and it's a great town. So thank you.
All right, I know you'd love to hang out with us all night, bud.
No.
I think that's all we have, so congratulations.
Congrats.
All right, so I know I'm kind of bouncing around, but at least we can let Paige go. So the next item is the meals tax update of policy. So this is an item that's been kind of kicking around, I'd say, since a little bit before town meeting, and then came up again at town meeting. I see we have Mr. Quinn here, who who also spoke about this at town meeting. So from my perspective, this agenda item, we want to really talk about three things. And let me know if I, if there's anything I missed, or if there's anything that anyone else has to add. But with COVID, there was, you know, some lost revenue from meals tax. And when meals tax were were put in place, the money was to go to OPEB and the roads. So no one anticipated COVID. We've now realized, number one, there's probably some language cleanup that we need to do to the policy. It is a little gray. Everyone knows and remembers from town meeting that, you know, that money was slated to go there, but when you look at the policy, it's a little bit gray. Another question that had come up, which Mr. Quinn had asked about, what payments have been made for '20, '21, and then going forward for '22? And then a third piece is, where does that money go? So we get it quarterly and we pay it, is it twice a year?
We get it, it's four times a year.
Four times, we get it four times a year, and we make a payment four times a year? Okay. So, you know, you can.
We get payments in the investment four times a year.
Four times a year, right, okay. So you can imagine, there's there's these sums of money that come in and are kind of, for this year, they didn't go into an investment, they they went into free cash, which I think from talking to Bill now, we understand that was different just for this one year. So do we need to set up something like a reserve fund? It sounds like that may be covered. I want to hear what the board thinks. And we may continue this discussion if we, you know, I think we'll have a policy likely to update, which will naturally continue this conversation when Seth gets back. I know he had some questions about it, too. So that's kind of the discussion that I want to frame around this agenda item for tonight.
So Madam Chair, I just would like to sort of clarify a few things and sort of help the discussion, so that you can all be in a better position to to deliberate over this. But so there are a couple of things that you should all be aware of. First of all, the the way we normally handle, have handled this, and we've, going back to 2018, we moved the the fund into a a separate investment company called, with a company called Bartholomew, who, and it's interesting to note, by the way, that I saw their statement, return statement that came, came to us this afternoon, and I was looking and studying this a little bit. And since since it's been with the Bartholomew, we went from an $8 million return to, which will be probably by the fall, close to 14.7 million. So we've up, we're up almost 80% in terms of the investment, investment return, which is a, and that's only a three-year period, so it's a pretty good return in terms of where that investment is going. What's also interesting is that is that up until this past year, we we took the more conservative approach of saying, look, we're not going to make any commitment to payment this year, because we don't, we know that the revenues are off, and in fact, they are. I mean, we've, we we know at this point in time, we're around $400,000 to $500,000 in terms of our our collections, and we'll do another payment this month, which would hopefully we think would be probably better than than most months, quarters prior to this this month, because of the actually return to the investor, the people returning to restaurants and and people dining out, et cetera. So we're going to see a tick up, obviously, in those revenues. So I'm going to say conservatively that the number's probably anywhere from 650 to 700,000 for the for the year, that we normally would take in somewheres between 1 and 1.1 million. So what we would, what I would propose to do is that even though the money will, is sort of, is actually a local receipt, not, it doesn't become free cash until it gets certified by the state. So what will happen is that we normally have, up until now, have have had an article that would go, that would be done at town meeting, which I think Bob remembers that, as an article that would be done. And we didn't do that this year, but we, and we haven't done it for this, for this fiscal year '22, because we officially hadn't come out of COVID until just this past week. So what I would recommend that we take is two steps. One is to, is to take the money that we collected from the meals tax, put it into the investment fund at town meeting in the fall, which would then make the 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 payment for this year consistent with what we've done in other years. And then also, actually then, put an article in place that would say that we would take a look at actually the investment return that we will probably see, or the the payment that we'll see probably in September for the first quarter of this fiscal year, which will give us an indication of where we are and what we can expect for a payment for for all of the fiscal year '21, '22, rather, which will take, start taking place on July 1st. So we'll see at that point what that number might be. We can then project out and take a look at what that that number might be, and then ask for an article that would be, make a 1.1, $1 million payment into the fund, and that will allow us to continue to make payments as they come in into the fund on a regular basis. And then basically return back to the to the normal cycle that we've been in until up until now. So it is interesting to note, by the way, that if you go back to 2012, when we started making payments based on the policy of the, for the, towards the OPEB, and and what we've done in terms of paying off off the, paying our roads, et cetera, that, you know, the current policy says that you shall, you shall supplement that as well. Again, that's something we should take a look at, because this is not a year to supplement that payment, given some circumstances. But there is some, some good news on the forefront. The the payments that we've made so far to that fund are actually $300,000 to the good in terms of what we've collected versus what we've put into the investment fund. And I mean that in the sense we paid more from free cash and other funds into the the OPEB as well as the the road investments, which to the good of $300,000 more than we've actually taken in. So we've actually, we're still ahead of the schedule in terms of what we've actually done, and that's as of 2020. So the good news that I wanted to report to you is that just as, this is, this literally came out this afternoon, we got more direction from the federal government this afternoon, that we do believe now that OPEB payments are eligible from the federal money coming in, which means that we could maybe supplement whatever money we made from the meals tax to get us back up to our ARC payment, which would then bring us back to, put us back on schedule. That coupled with the fact that we have about an 80% return just in the past three years, will put us way ahead of the schedule of where we should be in terms of paying down the, paying down the OPEB liability. That means that the last I checked, the last, and the first time we talked about this, the payment schedule was to be around 2038. The last, the last schedule indicated it would be down to 2035. I'm hoping that it's at least at 2035, maybe even less, which means that we'll be paying down that long-term liability much faster than anybody, almost virtually anybody in the Commonwealth, for that matter. So we're way ahead of that schedule, and we can, and I would strongly recommend that we continue on that schedule as well. So that's the latest information I wanted you to all have. There is some language errors or issues that we need to address in the policy, because no one anticipated that we'd have a pandemic like we just did in the past year, and that we would be in that kind of situation, where we had to take a look at at our our payments to that schedule, given the circumstances, that we weren't collecting the money. So I think that's really what I wanted, wanted to put out there for discussion. And the and the payment, the changes to policy are minimal. But one thing that we don't address is is how much money we put towards roads each year. You'll note that if you take a look at the schedule of payments that we made over the past, since 2012 until now, until 2020, that we made a sizable payment towards roads in in 2015, I think it was almost $900,000, went to roads, and that was a significant improvement on the road system. Here in town, people know that the roads have been improving rather significantly over the past several years. So we don't know that, we don't think we're going to need that, but but sometimes it's a conversation we want to have with Chris and and with Lance about, you know, what they think we need to be putting into the, into that fund to keep that, keep that going. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair. Looks like Bob's got a few points that he wants to make, to add to this, this conversation.
Can I speak?
Yeah, come up to the table, tell us your name, where you live. I mean, we all know, but tell everyone at home.
Brian Quinn.
Brian, I'm sorry. I apologize, Brian.
John, Bob, whatever. So just a couple of points, I guess, that I have. And my understanding of the ARC payment is that we do an evaluation, right?
Every two years.
Every two years, right. Right?
Yeah.
May determine an amount that we are supposed to make as a town.
Right.
To that liability.
That's correct.
Correct?
Actuarial evaluation?
It's an actuarial evaluation, that's correct.
That I think historically had been the 964,000 that we had paid.
Yeah, actually.
Prior to the COVID for a couple of years.
I think, yeah, that's right. The last, the last evaluation indicated it should be around $960,000.
So in my mind, that's a payment that the town agreed to pay off this liability by 2038. Okay? So that we do this actuarial evaluation every couple of years, we agree that, excuse me, that payment needs to be made. The meals tax was a nice way to fund that liability that we need to pay anyway. So that was the purpose of the meals tax. It took a couple of times to sell it, and the reason it passed was that the town decided it was prudent to pay off this liability, we'll use the meals tax, and we kind of kill two birds with one stone. We get the extra revenue, and we can go straight to that. But in our town policies, it says we make, we plan to make this ARC payment every year. And the primary funding is supposed to be the meals tax, and if it's not funded through meals tax, the town still is making that ARC payment. Okay? So that's what our policies say. And minus then looking at the, and even alluding to what you just talked about, that our contribution through the actuarial valu, valuation went up from 964 to a million, over a million through the report through 2019. So this assumption that we're paying it off in 2035 assumes we made a million bucks last year, which we didn't make, and assumes we're making a million bucks this year, which we may make.
Well, let me, let me just make, let me clarify that for you, because we made the payment in 2020, okay?
Understood.
So the 2020, the only thing that hasn't been paid so far is the 2021 payment, which will be made in, at the next town meeting. So I think that's, so that will, the 2021 payment will be made, fiscal 21 payment will be made in in the fall town meeting.
Which will then have no payments skipped.
Right, will have no, no payments skipped at that point, okay?
Okay, so that's the assumption that we are, we're going to go back and, not not go back, but we're going to, the payment we skipped last fiscal year.
Right.
We are going to double up and pay.
It's actually, no, it's actually this fiscal year. We're still in fiscal 21 right now, okay? So the fiscal.
For two weeks or three weeks.
Exactly. But then in calendar 21, which will be October, November this year.
So fiscal year, we're not going to make a payment.
Exactly. For this fiscal year, we're not going to make a payment.
So we're now the next fiscal year you're talking about, correct?
Right, so but let me just clarify that point. So fiscal 20, the fiscal 21 payment will be made in the fall, November of 20, of 2021, with, and then the other, the second piece, as I mentioned, would be an article that would say, let's get back on the schedule, so 2022 will be made as well. So we will not have missed any payments.
Okay, so just to clarify, so you're saying in fiscal '22, we're going to contribute roughly $2 million, a million from last year, and a million.
Well, technically, yes, but what's going to happen is the money that came from '21 will effectively be available for us to pay for '21.
And again, I, whether it came from '21 or where it came from, I don't, you know, didn't necessarily care, I guess.
But but I think what.
Are we getting, we are getting back?
Yes.
To fully on schedule.
Fully on schedule, that's correct.
But I think what Brian is bringing up is that we made that decision, so I wasn't on the board then, but I was just getting off AdCom, because I had pulled my papers, but the decision to just not fund it, I think was just said, was like, okay, we don't think the meals tax is going to be here, so we're not going to put it in the budget. When we're actually finding out, we weren't supposed to do that. Our policy says that that payment is to be made, and we get to use the meals tax. If there's only 500,000 in meals tax, then another 460 is coming from town money. That the, our financial policy says it's supposed to be paid. And so the the little problem I have is that we're.
I need to clarify that, though, because I never said we weren't going to not make the payment. I said, I would, we would make the payment based on what we collected. That was the issue. We never said we weren't going to make the payment. We said we were only going to pay that which we collected, because otherwise, you're taking out of free cash, and you don't want to do that.
But but here's the thing, Bill. If that's an obligation we have, then we have to adjust the rest of the budget.
The obligation is a policy. It's not a town meeting action, it's a policy. So that's the thing.
It's a policy that was voted on and signed by the sitting Board of Selectment. If you follow that, so, so it is, it's become a policy. The Board of Selectmen in 2011 said that payment is to be made. So we just ignored that.
No, 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 no. Because it was an extend.
I brought it to the board for that reason.
For that reason, it came in front of us.
All three boards that signed it.
To change that policy due to extenuating circumstances beyond that control. So it being a policy, we were able to, because of the situation, change that for this particular reason only, COVID.
It was not done in judicial decision by the town manager.
I will say, in, in full transparency, I'm going to admit when I make a mistake, sitting on this board, I did not know that the policy, or maybe I just missed it, was that we were supposed to make the payment regardless. I thought it was like, whatever comes in, we make, you know, if it doesn't come in, we don't make it, you know? Maybe shame on me that I didn't realize.
Even if you're on advisory committee, I didn't know until Brian Quinn,
Right.
you know, brought it to my attention, then I went back and read it and said.
Oh, yeah, same, same thing, you know? Yeah.
I mean, I will, I will say, I did not think the, the language was that significant, strict in terms of us making the actual payment.
Yeah, and now, and now we know.
But it's, we know, but I think, but the reality of that is that we, the intention was always to make the payment anyways, um, at least to look what we collected. And then we would have to decide if we wanted to use free cash to supplement that.
Yeah.
All right, so, so it was never the intention not to make the payment. I want to be 100% clear about that. It was, the issue was, we didn't know much we were going to collect, so we were, we didn't want to make a commitment to making that full payment until we understood what that number was, that's all.
And, and again, I, I, I fully agree that, you know, if I were sitting in your seat a year ago, um, and I agree, you know, this, this valuation is based on us making that payment, but the policy, again, says we will make it, but it does say it's not required. It's not like it's a mortgage and the town's going to default if we don't make that payment. But it is the prudent thing to do and that's what we're basing our future assumptions on. So I agree, you know, taking a year off, you know, was probably prudent or at least assessing to see what happened. Again, this became a big concern with me
Yeah.
when I didn't fully hear that going forward, it's an automatic process. And that's what, um, you know, my biggest issue was, is that, you know, we, according to this valuation, are on the hook for giving a million bucks a year, so we should be sending that 250 a quarter. And if, you know, 200 comes from meals tax, great, and if we got to fund 50 out of the rest of the budget, then we got to do that. That's my issues, that, that should be our process. There, there shouldn't be leeway except for a COVID-like.
That's right. Well, and I think that's, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. I think the, the whole idea was to take whatever prudent measures we could take at the time. I mean, actuarial studies, as you know, assume that everything stays pretty much the same.
Right.
You know, so, and this was not the case in this, this particular year. So I want to be 100% clear about that, that we're not, we actually did, under circumstance, think the right thing, but I, I think, not, I, I will admit to you, I did not think that that we were absolutely, um, we were actually married to that payment, but I, we did, I didn't want, I want to bring it back to everybody for, so we knew what we were doing was, was a short-term measure, only a short-term measure to get us through the situation we had.
Right.
So I think it's, I mean, I think it's been a, a great discussion on, on everyone's end, and I think it did clarify, like, like, it sounds like I don't want to put words in my mouth, but for you and, you know, for me and even you on AdCom and, you know, I, you know, so thank you for bringing that up and, you know, keeping on it, and I think we're all clear now. I think we have a clear path forward, even for 2021.
Right.
So I think we need to look at this policy though, if we need to adjust anything. Is this, so what you're saying is this is a board's policy, it doesn't have to go back to town meeting to vote on it?
No, this is, this is a policy, I think it should go to the same boards that signed it originally and have all four boards weigh in on it. But I think the only really adjustment would be that the language would say unless extenuating circumstances where the, all the boards, you know, determine that we have to take a pause.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, and that's clearly what happened in this instance in reality. But I do think that, um, that fortunately, it looks like because we are receiving some federal aid, we might be able to make the full payment anyways, and that we'll be able to utilize that, that money for that purpose.
And it sounds like if I'm hearing it correctly, we don't need to worry about any kind of reserve fund or anything because this was just a one-time thing.
It was a one-off.
It's going into the investment and everyone's comfortable with that, correct?
Yeah.
But do, do we want it, does, should it go to free cash or should it just go into?
It's not going to, it's not going to.
Oh, I thought it was going to go to.
No, it has to go to free cash for this year because, because we don't have a method or means by which we can transfer it out until we go to town meeting and do that.
But do we need to clarify the policy, what happens if we collect more, for example? Because it is kind of, is it, is it gray or is it?
Well, the issue is, the, 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 the policy only speaks to the issue of making the ARC payment.
Okay.
All right, so it doesn't speak to anything beyond that. So if it doesn't, if we collect more than that, then it goes back into the town's coffers. But I think.
And is that spelled out in black and white in the policy though?
I don't know if it's, I don't, I didn't.
I don't think it is, so I think that might be a part.
But, but don't forget, we also have another obligation and that's the roads.
The roads.
Right.
So whatever's left over would conceivably go to the roads, or if we thought that we needed to do more, then we could then make an additional payment to the, um, to, to, from free cash to the roads as well.
So it's, you know, conceivably, but it's not black and white in the policy, so it might just.
I think that needs to be.
It might need a little bit of sharpening of the pencils and tightening up.
My only two cents on that, again, you're, um, the ARC payment is its own animal and its funding from meals tax is a nice to have. And how you use the meals tax money above and beyond that really has nothing to do with the ARC payment.
Right.
Like you, the town should be committing to the ARC payment, the meals tax should mostly fund that, and you obviously count for it separately because in the town report, you show what the meals payment is and you show what OPEB is and you show what you've done to roads. So I, I, I think they have done that. I, I just think the town wants to make sure we have the commitment to that ARC payment as long as it's not.
Well, it says right in the policy, even though it's not a lea, it's not legally.
Right.
We're not legally obligated. We have, we, our policy says we are going to do it.
Right.
So we still broke the policy, even though it, it's not legally, but our, whoever was sitting on there and between town meeting, I mean, that meals tax came before the town three times before it passed. And one of the ways they got it to pass was like, hey, guess what? We'll put this money to this use, and if it's not the OPEB, then it's going to go to roads, which was, which was great.
Yeah.
But we violated our town policy.
But I disagree with you.
We didn't.
Read it, did you read it, Doc?
Wait a minute, yes.
Yeah.
But we didn't violate it. We, we came, it, uh, Bill came in front of this board and we voted as a board to just bypass it.
Okay.
It wasn't, I don't consider what I did a year ago a violation.
Okay.
I think that's too strong a word. I think due to the situation we were in, we had to change it, a one-time change, which a policy, that's what a policy is.
That's right, it's a living doctrine.
Policy is not a bylaw, a policy isn't, it, that, that, that town meeting, it's a guideline. The policy is a guideline. And, and if I did it unilaterally, I would be in violation.
Yeah.
But Bill and, and George coming in front of the board saying, hey, we're in a situation.
And it wasn't just this board, it was, it was AdCom, it was also the school committee as well.
Exactly, that we have to change this a little bit.
So AdCom did vote on that before we did?
AdCom, I, I presented that same option to everybody at the same time, we're all in the same meeting.
Financial summit?
It was, no, it was done actually, it's part of the, the response to the, to the COVID situation.
Okay.
So, and we said, look, you know, my recommendation is that we hold on that payment this year because, because we don't know how much we're going to collect.
But was that on the financial summit then?
It was, it was actually not the financial, because the financial summit was in the fall. We had to do this at the COVID, at the COVID response time.
Okay.
So it was back in March of 2020, 2020.
Which, which is understandable, I probably, if I was sitting on the board, I would do the same thing.
Right.
But, but then we come forward another whole year and we do the same thing, and rather than putting it wording in our policy, you know, if there, if, if we have to do this, then, you know, I, all I'm saying is we should get it cleaned up soon.
Well.
Because now we came a second year, and I don't recall this, this year, when I, I wasn't involved for 2021, but I don't recall this year it being presented to us, like we're supposed to do this, but, you know, I, I, I feel like it was just presented like, we don't know what those funds are going to be, so I think we just, we, we should not budget it again, when it probably would have been better to budget it, because at that point, by the time we came into, to this budget season for 22, we had started to see that money was coming in, not what it had been, but I feel like then it should have been like, okay, now we're starting to bounce back, let's keep it for 22, and if we can't make the payment, but then I feel like we've gone into a second budget without any discussion
But Stephanie, there's, there's a significant, there's a significant problem with doing that. If you do that, you're committing to the budget to do that, or money that you don't think is going to come in, you don't know if it's going to come in or not. And the problem with that, then you would have had to cut other things in the budget to do that. So I think that what we did was the prudent thing under the circumstances. We're not missing a payment. That's the bottom line. We're not going to miss, we delayed a payment, we're not going to miss a payment.
Yeah.
So I think that's the key, is that, and, and, you know, full disclosure, nobody, and we're actually $300,000 to the good on this. We're not, we haven't missed a payment on any of it. We delayed a payment. I want to be 100% clear about that. So I think, and, and given the circumstances, that was the right thing to do.
And I think the 22 budget was still a question mark to some extent.
It clearly was.
I mean, look at how much we've changed in the last six weeks, you know, and we did the budget freaking.
We didn't expect it to be open May 29th, I'll tell you that.
No, none of us.
I wasn't expecting, sitting here with the four of us straight across without a mask anymore, I thought this was going to be a lot longer process. So, no, I, I think, uh, I, I think we went into this with, uh, 2022 with, yeah, I think we're going to be able to do it, and as it turns out, we were, we are able to do it.
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing to that though?
It's still a financial obligation though, Doc. So if it's a financial obligation and we have to cut other things in the budget to do our obligation, in general, whether it's, we, we delayed one year, whatever, that's a financial obligation the town has. So even though we're not going to get, I, I think like Brian said, it's not like, no, you didn't pay your, you didn't pay your mortgage, someone's going to foreclose, it's still a financial obligation. So if we know that financial obligation is there and we have to adjust the budget, then we have to adjust the budget.
And I think hindsight is.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what I was going to say, again, you know, the, it's not like, you know, you're saving to buy a pool, right, right? I mean, this is true financial ramifications.
This week a pool of nights.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think if you get, you know, one year, fine, but if you get to, you know, two years because of extenuating circumstances, then personally, I think it would be prudent to look at the budget and say, hey, we got to make some cuts because this is a real debt that we have.
The true, the true test of this whole thing though, is that we, we had a review by, by, by our bond rating agency, and we fully disclosed that to them. And they said, as long as you get back on track, which we said we would. We told them right then, we would, and they, they didn't, they didn't ding our, our bond rating because of that. They said, look, it's, we understand it, we understand the situation you're in, and we, and we, and we agree with the approach that you're using. So there was no, you know, I don't want to make this sound like it's the worst thing that it is. It really was a, a cautious step to take. It was, um, it was disclosed, it was something that we did, and, and quite honestly, we're going to get back on track now that we're back in full, in full swing.
So I mean, hindsight's 2020, we're in a global pandemic, no one ever thought that our restaurants would be shut down. I think we made it through okay, and, you know, if we're going to make the payment and stay on track, I think the next steps are to revise the policy and, you know, maybe we bring that, I don't know if it'll be ready for next meeting or it's the other, I just don't want to lose sight of it.
No, well, we can, we can make the suggested changes. Now, the only question I had for the board is, do you want to make mention of, of the roads in the, in the policy as well? Because that's not addressed anywhere in any of the policies that I'm aware of.
I think it should be.
What, as to the excess money goes to the roads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the gray that we're talking about. Like, everyone knows and remembers the history, but it's not in writing. And, you know, if we're going to have turnover at the town manager's office, and you never know, you know, where else, it's, it's just good to, to document.
And I also think it's, it's prudent to say that if there isn't enough money to meet the kind of expense that we want to have, um, that you can always supplement that with, with free cash if you want to at that point, but that's, again, a policy, a policy
Maybe we spell out that it's AdCom, Board of Selectmen, that like, which boards decide on that and discuss it. We'll just put it in black and white, and then we can expect to see a fall town meeting article for 2021's payment, and then in the spring, you know, we'll, we'll see the normal schedule that we normally see.
One last thing I want to just mention, make mention of is the fact that the, while we have been making significant commitments to roads over the years, we also should, should include language that addresses sidewalks. So if we graduate from roads into sidewalks, you know, we should be looking at that.
Road to sidewalks.
And then continue to, to make commitments. And I even had the suggestion made to me, which I thought was a good one, was that if we, you know, even if we don't have a need, which I think we're going to still have a significant need for sidewalks and roads for the next several years, but if we don't have a need, that we continue to make a payment into like a road stabilization fund, that will basically take that money and, and do the same thing we're doing with OPEB and everything else. So we're, we're retiring our long-term obligations, but we're also, it's not, we're planning for the, for the next phase of those. So I should think that's a, that's a prudent thing to do, it's a good time to look at that policy for that reason as well.
And again, 10 years from now, when that obligation is paid off, do we want to think about where that money goes?
Yeah.
Now, or do we wait, you know, seven and a half years for something like that?
It's a, it's a good strategic discussion.
Yeah, it really, that, there should be a
Because that's 10 years flies by.
Yeah, of, of what the next step is.
Or 12 years.
You know, those, I think there's four points then that we just collected to, to take into the policy and bring back to us maybe for next meeting or the meeting after.
Okay.
And then I, I just want to involve Seth in the conversation as well, given it's back in the AdCom, so.
We should be able to present something to you at the next meeting for that.
All right, I don't know how heavy that one is, so. All right, great, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
All right, so how fitting to go into our next item, which is fiscal year 22 goals discussion. And in board docs, we have the goals that were collected and compiled by Mike. My thought from here is, I still, I think that we can bucket this really maybe into four buckets, so Mike, I, I'm kind of looking at this in the flash, so I apologize, I didn't sense, see this at the right time. But I kind of think five, six, and seven could maybe go into four. Thought, and then we keep it, you know, to the four, and, you know, I haven't had a chance to kind of edit this with kind of what I think, so maybe we do that, get, get the, if the board has any reaction today to what they say here and what I'm discussing, then we compile it and, um, you know, hopefully with Seth here, because it is his first year, I do want to make sure that we involve him in the discussion and allow him the opportunity to discuss it next time. So I think that would be my plan for what we see here for, again, and these are Board of Selectmen goals, not Town Managers' goals.
Right.
These will then cascade down into the goals that we set for Bill. So any thoughts on that process, or does that sound okay to everyone?
Yeah, to me, it just seems like, you know, it's, it's what we do, but in writing.
Yeah, yeah, and it holds, like, it just holds us accountable, not accountable, but, you know, I, I've said to Bill and Christina, sometimes I think there's things that we talk about, it's through no one's fault, but we talk about things, then they kind of die on the vine unintentionally, like they just get forgotten about, forgotten about. So I would love to memorialize some of this, and I think it is like the big buckets, Doc. You know, protect the fin, and maintain the financial health, you know, increase communication and engagement, um, same thing with, with economic growth, and then, you know, enhance and improve town operations. So I think those would be our goals, and then we can have these kind of subbullets here to keep us honest as we, as we think about it, but I think the main goals would be kind of those four is, is my thought, so.
If I might, Madam Chairman, um, I, I agree with you. I, you know, I was asked when, as you sent in your goals, you know, don't, don't repeat things, so down the bottom of your, of your page, I have all the individual inputs that I received from the board members, and then up top, I, I put them into buckets. I didn't want to leave things that didn't neatly fit in because I wanted to be able to see them, but I think those, those bottom several do get nested in. One other thing is that I think all of these may fall under the, the umbrella of sustainability.
Yeah.
When, when you look at the, and I don't want to put words in, but it just occurred to me as I'm looking at your goals that you sent in, when you talk about financial health, that's the financial sustainability of the town operations in future, paying down its, is that. debt. Communication and engagement is also the, you know, the sustaining engagement with the community, the citizens' interests. Again, the business, town operations, that's all sustaining what the residents expect of us. So, but to answer your question, I do agree that those bottom three, you know, need to move up and you could probably go with the four goals.
The only one, and I think this was yours, Steph's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the IT vulnerability review to me is not, and again, maybe you have an explanation. I don't know that that's a Board of Selectmen goal. I think that Bill would roll that into maybe Department Head goal.
Yeah.
So that's the only one, my gut reaction was, I don't know that that's us. That was the only one that I maybe want to scratch and let Bill decide. And maybe he can follow up with you where exactly it lands, so we don't lose sight of it.
I think, you know, I happened to pick it up just from watching on television, a couple of different towns, a couple of companies, you know, we're going through a lot of that now and it made me think, where are we?
Yeah, and our website went down. And what we saw this morning with some of the websites.
Rantware.
Yeah, yeah. Like, the New York Times was down this morning because their server, like, our server went down.
And I was thinking as I wrote it, I was like, I just figured it was fresh on my mind and maybe more of a goal for us to push to somebody, to push to where it really needed to be.
Mike.
Yep.
To Mike.
Oh, yeah.
He's hiding behind there.
All right. So that's my thought and I'll let you guys know, you know, that's kind of where I'm going, that I would then take, I think it's really five and six, and for those at home, it's policy review and town manager succession planning. And I think that I would just move those up, to me, those fall under town operations. So. And I know the policy review is already kind of underway. I think that's an action item for later today for us to put them all together, but we haven't really looked at the meat of them, the actual makeup of the policy, so.
One thing you may want to think about looking at is under financial, under financial health is to, is long-term financial strategy.
Yes, yes. Can you add that one, long-term financial strategy? And maybe that's like CIP planning, too?
That's where you see CIP, you'll see pension, you'll see OPEB, all those kind of payments that, you know, once those things are paid off, what's the thoughts?
Yeah.
Where do you go from here? And, you know, looking at, you know, your capital picture and, you know, we should be, theoretically, you should be looking at building improvements every 20 to 25 years. You know, so, because buildings, you know, obviously evolve. And so you should be looking at that, either major improvements or actually replacement in some cases.
Okay. So that's kind of where I'm at, if everyone's OK with that. You know, I think it just keeps us honest. We all know, like, six months flies by, a year flies by, and it'll just have us have some specific check-ins on some specific items throughout the year, just as a pulse. All right, so we can add that one, too. Hopefully, that's just a quick action item to get that approved for next time. And I can always touch base with Seth offline, just to let him know so that, you know, he's had a chance to think through it. And maybe you can do, I don't know, Mike, if you're talking to him again before that about these, but just let him know where we're at.
Sure.
All right. That's what I have for that agenda item. I think we're good. Next is the Assistant Town Manager's update.
I have several items for you this evening. I want to start first with the, you know, the goal setting. The next step in this, once the board has its goals and the town goals set for the upcoming 12 months, is, you know, I've shared your goals as well as the summary of your goals with Bill. And in two weeks, you know, he'll be able to come back and have a discussion with the board so that the board and the town manager can agree upon, or at least review, and hopefully agree upon the goals for the next 12 months. You know, Chair mentioned Personnel and Policy Guide, that's a little later on our agenda, but there is a guide, and I'll get into that a little later. But, and then a follow-on to that is, that guide incorporates all of the current policies that we have, HR policies. But then we're going to start pulling them out of there and reviewing those policies that are a couple of years, two, three years old now. And at our next Personnel Board meeting, we'll be doing that. We'll be addressing a couple of those policies and making sure that we, you know, that our now consolidated policy guide is up to date with, you know, with everything we need to. I do want to mention, speaking of Personnel, is that we do have one open position on the Personnel Board. There is someone who's done a fantastic job. Heidi's been with us and made tremendous contributions. And, you know, life has gotten busy and she's, it's time for someone else to maybe step in. So, you know, maybe we'll address that later. But I just did want to let the community know that there's an opening there. And we're going to be, you know, posting that as well as other openings that we are aware of in the next couple of weeks, coming up to the next meeting, so that residents can see ways to participate further in their community and their local government. The computer use policy, and I apologize for not having that ready because I didn't get it on your agenda this evening to vote, but there is a computer use policy that's ready. And there are actually two of them. One for employees. The last one we have is quite dated, so it's been rewritten. And there's one that addresses Board Committee and Commission members. And then a separate one that's very similar, but it addresses employees with stronger language, like, you're not following this policy, maybe determination, that sort of thing.
Did the Personnel Board have a chance to weigh in on that one at the last meeting?
They, no, not yet. We didn't have it ready for that, but I'm going to, I'm going to share that with them, ask them for feedback. But the pressing thing on that is that, as Bill and Leah and I know, we attended a webinar recently where they strongly encouraged that your Chief Policy Board, namely the Board of Selectmen, have town email addresses. And that's where we're going with, you know, for starters, with the Board Committee and Commission, computer use policy. So our board members will have town of Foxborough email addresses after we adopt this policy and then you'll all sign Page Two of it. And then, but it also touches the rest of our boards, committees, and commissions because, you know, it also relates to social media and those sort of things and, you know, behavior when acting on an official basis, you know, as a town official. Later in the meeting, we'll get to the remote meeting policy. And I just want to note that the governor has filed legislation that we think will present something that's a little more closely aligned with the sort of remote participation we've gotten used to over the last year, as opposed to the policy that you're going to see as an action item later in tonight's meeting, which is very restrictive. But we think it's important for you to take it up and if you agree, vote on it. So at least we have something if that legislation doesn't pass. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, great.
Can I add something quick, kind of tagging off Mike's update? I just wanted to, I always like to, if I misspeak, I like to correct myself, especially if I speak and the public can hear me, I want to make sure I retract what I said. I did text Mike, we were having a conversation about one of the positions that he had listed and I was questioning it. And as I got home and I had a little conversation with my husband, we were, he was explaining to me a little bit how that position works differently up at Town Hall. And so I did text Mike and just told him that, you know, I was a little bit more up to date on it. And only because I was questioning it, I just like to make sure I, on television, say that I was mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Anyhow.
All right, great.
You're a fine person for saying that. Thank you.
Really, I'm sorry, but thank you.
That's OK.
The next one's the Town Manager's update. And Doc just pointed out the 6.2, the goal setting for the Town Manager. I kind of brushed on that one, but skipped it because we don't have goals for the board and then that will cascade after. So my thought for Bill's goals are, it's the same main goals really as last year is my thought, but feel free to do what you want with the sub-goals underneath for our review. Does that, are you happy with that?
It doesn't. Honestly, I didn't realize we were supposed to submit more for Bill because I thought...
No, we haven't. No, we didn't.
You're fine.
No, we didn't. Bill will do his own goals and then we'll get them from Mike.
And then like last year.
To say, does this look good or not? I think we've realized, you know, some of the stuff, a lot was accomplished last year, can come off. Some stuff we felt was a little bit duplicative, that can come off. Bill may have different things to add under one of those four. So I said the general direction is, you know, keep those main goals, but edit the sub-goals as you see fit.
So just process-wise, it's really helpful for the board to set goals first?
Yes.
And then we, as an organization, build our goals off of what you do.
So this will come with the next meeting?
Yeah, once you're clear on what you want and then, and all five of you agree on that, then I will take that document and then I'll certainly work on some stuff in between. But there are things that I can then present to the organization and say, OK, these are the things, the goals that the board wants for the town for this year. How are we going to try and achieve this? So, and then we build our work off of that. So just process-wise, this is the right first step.
Okay, perfect. So sorry to jump back on that, Bill, but just needed to, and then...
Madam Chair, that's actually important and the timing is good on that. We're right now in the evaluation period for all 173 of our town employees. And really, it comes, you know, set the board goals first and then Bill's goals, which will be nested within that. And then the Department Head goals, which would be nested within. And the importance there is, anyone who's not traveling in the same direction or not within the goals and the values of the board and the town is really traveling in the wrong direction. So this is the way it starts. The board, then the Town Manager, then the Department Heads, and then down through the department. So that's the way it cascades and that's the way our organization progresses forward in the right manner.
And then hopefully, like, the IT vulnerability, you know, maybe you can take that to whatever Department Head you deem fit and let them know it is not one of our goals, but kind of came from the board.
An operational.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so anything else? I don't think we've heard your update yet.
All right, so, so just a couple of things for you to see, to hear about. One is a very important one, and two important ones, like, right off the top. First is that we are, I've asked the board to convene briefly on Friday morning because we have finally reached a milestone in the sense that the fire station and funeral home property in the center of town have, we've reached finalization on the financing from the potential buyer. And they've notified us that they're ready to close. So we will have some document, we'll have a document that will be, need approval by the board on Friday. So I didn't want to hold up to the nub for another two weeks because they can actually get moving on the project. And the sooner they can get going, the better it is for everyone. So I think, so I've asked the board to convene on Friday and everyone has agreed to do that. So the second thing, this is really significant, I just heard this late this afternoon, I got word from Congressman Alkon Klos's office this afternoon that we had requested a $3.5 million earmark in the federal budget for consideration in this upcoming year. And we were notified that the Subcommittee on Transportation actually approved the $2 million earmark for potential funding in that, in their meeting this afternoon. So, which is great news. It means it's $2 million that we can use towards potential for utility costs for the light at Walnut Street, et cetera, sewer, all those utility costs that will actually help be paid for by the federal government. So that's a significant milestone because it's rare that you get those earmarks, but we made a very good case for it. Again, that was Paige's good work along with our Engineering Department and Public Works folks that will provide a good support for that and all the letters that we sent in support of that. So I think, again, a great milestone for the town. Hasn't been funded yet, it still has to go through the House and Senate and then the President before we get final approval of it, but at least it's a huge step in the right direction. Once you make it past that step. And that's not part of the, just so everybody is clear on, this is not the major infrastructure bill that's being debated right now between the House and Senate. This is a surface transportation bill, which is actually a sub-level of that process, which has a much greater chance of getting passage. So we're hoping that will be the case. So really good news on that. And then the, also, we got a letter just yesterday, actually, from the County, Norfolk County Commissioners, indicating that they are, in fact, committed to providing us, and this is, it's actually highlighted in bold, "It is our intention, always been our intention, to disperse the preponderance of these funds to our constituent cities and towns," meaning that they intend to pass through that money to us as much as possible. And it's just a matter of finding out what the right mechanics are for making that happen. I don't think that they want to take on the responsibility for the recounting of that money once it's dispersed, which would mean that we would have to do that if they did that. So we're trying to find a way to do that, which would be less onerous to them. And so we've got a couple of ideas that we're working on still and so hopefully that'll come out in the wash in the next few weeks because we want to get it in before the end of the fiscal year. And also, just past week, we met with the, with the Summer Board of Directors met this past week to get an update on what's happening on that front. And things are going very, very well. And they're proceeding very, very well. In fact, we've now drawn a lot of attention from a number of communities across the Commonwealth who have expressed interest in joining the region. So now we're working through those steps to see how that will work. And we'll have to revise the agreement, the intermunicipal agreement for all the four towns that are currently the original four towns and see what kind of steps we'll have to take to make that happen. But too early to announce the towns, but they, towns and cities for that matter. So interesting to see there's quite a bit of interest in them joining because obviously this is the place that, and the state is considering this to be the model for 911 facilities in the state right now. That's it for my update. Where'd it go? Yeah, OK. So we'll catch up to that.
All right. I would like to point out, it's so humid in this room that my paper is like wet. So Selectmen's update, I'm going to run through a couple. I've bulleted out a couple here and then I have a couple that came up after the agenda came out. So I just want to keep you guys in the loop for what's going on. I don't have an update yet, but there is a budget and town meeting process debrief on Monday. So if you have any thoughts for things that we can improve, like, we just talked about the meal tax, or, you know, other things, so it's going to be me, Bill, Larry, and then Paul from AdCom. You know, we have the budget calendar and we have the, you know, the town meeting policy, guidebook. Sorry, I'm struggling to remember the word, guidebook. But there's always an opportunity after each town meeting, when it's fresh, to say, what did we do different? Like, I think right away, you know, taking the explicit vote on the budget increase for the year, making sure, talking about how the financial summit happens, getting that scheduled. So just kind of talking about the process, town meeting, the budget process, where we can sharpen our pencils and then, you know, be smooth or even more smooth for next year, although I think this went very smooth. There's always room for improvement. So if you guys have anything, just shoot it along to me before Monday. The next item is, oh, we did the Paige one. The American Recovery Plan's use of funds, I'm going to come back to that one if you don't mind. Some other events, the concert on the Common, first one's Thursday, and I think there's a special, like, straw hat night, so look on that, on social media, on the GC's page for that. And then Planning Board, the local, the beta group's coming in to present the local rapid recovery plan that Paige has been working on with me and a couple other people. So we're kind of combining meetings, that's going to be presented to the Planning Board. The Foxborough Common Business Collaboratives invited to attend. That meeting will still be televised. If you are at the concert on the Common Thursday and you can't catch it, you can go back and watch it on demand on cable access, so they're capturing that for us. So if anyone's interested in that, just kind of a heads up that that meeting is Thursday as well. Anything else?
I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. First of all, I took a ride up to just check out Shovel Town.
Oh, yeah, me too. I went.
Actually, I dismissed you.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, you know, I just went up just to lay eyes, that's all. And everything, it was a little bit slow when I was there, but Thursday night was also chances of storms and stuff like that. So it was a little bit slow. And so, you know, I sat with the owners for a little bit, we just kind of gabbed. They said Doc had been up at some point. He said, oh, you dismissed Leah, Lee was there. So, you know, I mean, it's fresh in the first week, unfortunately, they had a lot of rain.
Yeah, that didn't help.
Yeah. So, but it was, you know, it was just, just went up just to lay eyes and, I mean, everything seemed to be running really well.
The wrist bracelet really made me feel good, too. I had to, you know, they carded everyone, gave them a wrist bracelet and beer was good, so.
Well, and so my daughter had gone up with a couple of friends. She said, are we allowed to? I said, yeah, they just wanted to get something to eat. They were underage and so they had their underage, you know, bracelets on, but they felt like they were, you know, big people by sitting where other people were drinking. But anyhow, so I just wanted to mention that, you know, it's fairly new and I'm sure we'll hear little bits and pieces, just like any business, the good, the bad and stuff, but it was just nice to see everything looked like it was running pretty well.
And on a positive note, I actually talked to a neighbor who said that the fence is nice because now it blocks a little bit of the Conrad I saw.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it was a very casual conversation, but I think that they were appreciative of the fence and ended up going.
I don't think you meant to say it that way. The Conrad I saw.
Well, I just mean the back of a building in a dumpster. Sorry, I don't mean to...
If it's a butt in your house.
I just wanted to clarify that.
They see a fence now instead of the back of a restaurant. Could be any restaurant, the back of the Plaza. Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the only other thing, you know, I always like to bring that personal piece to our Selectmen's update. I just wanted to do kind of remembrance. I know Bill sent out to all of us that Rosie Buckley had passed away last week. We've gotten to be very, very close with them. Jimmy's family was, has been friends with him before they were in Foxborough. So I just wanted to say, you know, what a great family. I mean, they raised their family here and all four of their children still live in Foxborough. And, you know, we have, obviously, we have Assistant Fire Chief Buckley and Officer Buckley and, you know, Bill and Christine are right over at Bay Colony. But I just wanted to share just a quick conversation. So Jimmy and I went over to see Mr. Buckley a day or two before the wake and they were just talking. And, you know, Jimmy said something that just kind of stuck with me. He looked at Mr. Buckley and he said, you know, we ended up in Foxborough because of you and Rosie. Because my in-laws were friends with them and they all lived in, you know, in Boston and they knew each other from going to school and stuff. And Mr. and Mrs. Buckley were the first ones to head to Foxborough and then the Donleys followed, you know, a lot of great families from Foxborough followed. And so we were just sitting there and I was just like, you know, that's just makes, you know, that's how, then I ended up meeting Jimmy and how things work out. But Mr. Buckley looked at me and he said, he said, you know, Foxborough has been so good to us. And he was, you know, so many people had reached out and of course, you know, I showed And he was, you know, so many people had reached out, and of course, you know, I showed up with food, and my mother-in-law's cheesecake recipe that he loves, and, but he just said everybody was so good, and just, you know, another great family from Foxborough making a difference, that he was so appreciative of what Foxborough had meant to him. So I just wanted to bring that kind of little personal thing. And Mrs. Buckley was incredible, and she will be always loved, you know, surely missed, and will live on in all her children, and, you know, 15 grandchildren, and, you know, just, yeah, just my little personal something for Selectmen's update.
Nice, very nice.
I didn't realize they'd been together for 66 years.
I know.
Pretty extraordinary.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
All right, so we have a lot of action items, but I think most of them are pretty quick, so we've got...
Can I just ask a question?
Can you come up to the table and give everyone your name?
Debbie Stewart, 44, in the Ponce at Heights Ave. I just, I know I came in at the tail end of the conversation about meal tax. Thank you, Stephanie, for making me emotional. But before I start all that, I want to tell you, great beard. I walked in and I said...
It's been under that mask, you know?
He trims it pretty religiously, he's pretty good about it.
All he needs is a hat.
I know, that's right.
Well, thanks, now I have one vote of confidence.
What can I say? No, I love it. And that's from, that's sincere, okay?
Thank you.
I know I came in at the end of it, but I didn't think coming in in my nightgown and my bathrobe would be appropriate, so I tried to dress real quick. Is there any way that I could, can we go back to that a little bit? Because I don't know how the conversation ended, but I have been in touch with Larry Harrington, and I've talked to Jim at great extent, and Linda, because I was very close to that whole process. And I would just like the board to think about allowing Larry, who worked on that for years and years and years, to either come, I don't know if he'll come from Hawaii, because we've been talking and he's been in Hawaii back and forth, or to send the board his opinion of how this all came about.
Well, not to go backwards or cut you off, but I feel like we ended in a really good spot on that. I think Mr. Quinn agreed where we're going. I think we all, like we said, hindsight's 20-20. Like, I sat up here and said, when I voted to, you know, delay the payment, I didn't realize in there it says that we're still responsible for it, like...
Right.
So I think that we did go through a lot of that, and we have the background, I think Bill kind of admits where there was gray, or, you know, I think that we all kind of see maybe, I don't know what background additionally you think we need, but I feel like the conversation went pretty well, we have all of our follow-ups, we agree we have to amend the policy, there was four things that we talked about that we need to clarify in there, even going down to, you know, spelling out sidewalks and stuff. So I don't know how much of you saw it, but if there's something specific, I don't know that we need, you know, if Mr. Harrington wants to send something in, he can, but I don't think we need to reach out to him.
Madam Chair, I think, I don't know if Deb was aware of this, but we actually finished at a point, at a point where the payment for 2021 will be made whole, we're looking to do that.
Right, I did see all that.
And then '22, we're going to, we're looking to do the same thing. So, and the only thing, the only thing that put the fly in this ointment was COVID, and that we were all concerned that we didn't want to make a commitment to something that we couldn't afford.
Right.
So that was it. That was really it. So I think beyond that, we've, we're back to a position, and I think, and I recall saying this, that, you know, we would certainly commit to what we did collect, to put it back into the payment. And also on top of that, if we could, if we needed to double up at any one time, I also said this, too, if we needed to double up, we would do that, if we could afford to do that. So we're staying on schedule, that's our plan, and that was, at the time, it was, it was a concern that we all had, that we didn't want to commit to a cost that would be beyond the town's reach. And now we're in a position now where we think we can address it. It's also even more interesting, and you probably didn't hear this, that we do think we can actually spend some of the federal aid that's coming in to be spent towards offsetting that payment as well, too. So that, even if we don't have enough payment coming in to meet the full ARC payment, which is the annual required contribution, that we would, in fact, possibly use some of the federal money to do that as well. So that could put us in a position where we completely made whole through 2021, and also for, and put us on the track for '22.
And I think now we're clear that going forward, even let's say the meal tax comes in at 670 in our payments, you know, a million two, we need to make that up per what the policy is. Or if we're not going to have a discussion about it that all four boards weigh in on and agree. So I think it ended on a pretty positive note, that, unless there's specific concerns, I don't know.
My concern was just that I got the distinct feeling that we were going to move probably in the future in a different direction.
Nope, I don't think that's what I didn't want to happen. No, no.
Because I, I sat through those three town meetings and listened to it.
And I talked to you on the phone, I said, I think, I said, "Slow down, I think we're sounding the alarms, and that's not what I'm hearing at all." So I think, I know what your concerns are, but I don't think that Bill's there, that Mike's there, that we as a board are here, Oriad Coms there, so.
There's been no indication at all that we were going to change that direction, not at all.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Now I can go back home and go and shave this one, and don't shave off your beard. It's very...
They want to talk to his wife about that, though.
It's on the record.
Michael had one, and I said, "Oh, it's got to go, it's got to go." But he kept it for two years, and then I finally got used to it. When he shaved it off, I didn't even notice.
Yeah.
That's how much I paid attention.
Tell Michael we said hello, by the way.
Oh, I will, he's home watching, he goes, "I can't believe you're doing this." I said, "Why would you think that I wouldn't?"
Well, thanks for coming down.
And you're all doing a good job.
Your passion is...
Sometimes I'm better than others, you know?
That's why, I can tell, when I think, when I think, I was going to say, whoa, Deb, slow down. I think we're good.
I had to breathe, yeah, thank God there was no cops in the center.
Thanks, Deb.
We have to have that on.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
So we have eight action items, some of which have a couple within, so.
Madam Chairman, I just have one thing for an update.
Yeah?
The, no, it's okay, I didn't bring it to you. Nicole Halen from the chair of the Foxborough Cultural Council wanted to be here tonight, but she actually had her meeting, so she couldn't come. But she wanted to let the Selectmen know, and I've been working on this project with her for a little bit, that the grand opening of the Foxborough Art and Nature Conservation Passport, so they're basically trying to get people out into the conservation spots around town, so the five different ones, and the Boyd &amp; Library is going to be doing Storytimes there and everything like that, so it's going to be an online component and also a paper passport, so that grand opening of everything is going to be Saturday, June 26th at 10:00 a.m. And so she's invited all the Selectmen to come, and she will come and explain a little bit more about it on the June 22nd meeting, but then I want to give you just a four-day notice to attend.
Okay, all right, awesome, that sounds great. Thank you. All right, now I think we're really ready for the action items. Unless Katie, I can see Katie's back, she's just back for the action items, okay.
So first is...
I can go ahead and discuss?
Yeah, yeah, the personnel one.
Yep. All right, motion to adopt personnel and policy guide as recommended by the Personnel Board.
Second.
And under discussion, like we said, this is kind of just putting the policies together, no policies have actually changed. We'll look at the meat of those policies next, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to adopt the remote meeting policy for all boards and committees of Foxborough.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Normandy Farms?
Motion to approve, motion to approve for one-day wine and malt beverage license for Normandy Farms Campground LLC DBA, Normandy Farms Campground for July 7th, August 11th, September 18th, and November 6th, 2021.
Any discussion?
Well, second, four discussion, what are the events? Do we know what the events are?
Oh, sorry. Uh, yeah, the applications are all in here.
Oh, okay.
They have different, like, themed weekends, I guess would be...
It's similar to the Food Truck Festival that they had last year, just with, what Leah said, different themes.
Yeah, just didn't look, okay. Never mind.
All right, no, all those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, no, I was going to say CBS Sporting Club, go ahead.
Okay. Motion to approve the extended food service hours request for CBS Scene DBA CBS Sporting Club for July 10th, August 7th, September 4th, 2021, until 2:00 a.m. alcohol service to remain as an existing license.
Second.
So just under discussion, this is just the UFC fight that we usually say alcohol doesn't change, it's food, and letting them stand for the end of the fight. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we see this annually, the commercial parking permit renewals.
Motion to approve 30 commercial parking permit renewals to expire 6/30/2022.
Second.
Under discussion, there was one or two, Katie, that just had small payments, are those all set now?
There are three businesses that remain, between myself and finance, we've been in contact with them. They know they're either bringing payments in by the end of this week, or, and they all know they will not get their license unless they have everything paid, so they know to get those payments in.
No, you can approve, we just won't, we won't give them to them until they...
Do we have to mentor them on the motion, or no?
No, it sounds like it's covered.
Okay.
So we already took the motion, seconded, discussed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the March 30th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
And under discussion, I had sent just super minor, those are all, I haven't gone and checked them, the ones that I sent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Those are all me.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye. I apologize.
Oh, sorry.
Steph, do you have to recuse?
No, you can still vote, we've determined, we've said this before, if you didn't go, you can still vote on the meeting minutes.
You're just voting on the, like, you read the minutes and you...
But she wasn't even on the board.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was different than just missing it, I'm sorry.
I thought it didn't matter that we had determined that.
I think she can, I think she can approve it, yeah.
March 30th, 2021?
Yeah.
She was still on the board.
It was just a couple of, just a month or so ago.
Oh, okay.
It was Krista that wasn't on the board.
Huh?
Krista wasn't, it was Krista.
Seth, I'm sorry. Yeah.
How could you forget you're not sitting here?
It's been a year with you, how could I forget that? It's Seth, I figured, yeah, sorry, Steph, I'm sorry.
Oh, we voted, right?
Yep, we've done them all individually.
Motion to approve the April 13th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to approve the April 27th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a heads up, I'm going to abstain, that's the one I, that's the one I missed.
But you can vote on the meeting minutes.
I know, I, if I'm not here, I always abstain.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Because I just figure, because I don't really know if they're correct or not, so...
You don't go back and watch them?
Actually, believe it or not, I did watch a little bit of that one. I did watch a little of that one. That was a long meeting, too. Okay. Motion to accept donation of $300 to the COA from an anonymous donor for senior center programs with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Motion to accept with gratitude a donation of $240 to the COA from Friends of Foxborough Senior for Tai Chi in March and April 2021?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And then motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, before you do that, just want to, congratulations to the senior class, who just graduated, right?
Oh, yeah.
Don't want to forget that one. And I didn't want to, I did want to recognize Kyle, Kyle Rock, who's going to be our intern this summer, and he's donating his time to learn a little bit about local government, and happy to have him aboard, so.
Choosing to sit in these meetings with us like we do.
Right.
And it is cool, since we're talking about the graduating seniors, to see them on the board at the Rogan Center.
Love that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, to have, to have their banner here, but to have them up there is very cool.
And I think I may be the only one still with kids in school, but just what the staff, like, from food services to secretary staff to teachers, to specialists doing things like teaching recorder remotely, I mean, it is just, it absolutely blows my mind, the year that they had, and the successful year they had, so, you know, just a thank you to all them, too, for getting this class through.
And you know, I don't know if you guys remember, but last year, right after I got on the board, Ryan graduated, and I mentioned that even though it was different, it was still wonderful. They did everything they could, and, you know, now these kids have gone through, you know, their whole senior year with COVID restrictions, so, like you said, kudos to everybody who's made it be okay for all the kids in town. All right, so a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.